We need to order, please send for pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, literate, and just strong. Okay. And two, the agenda adoption, two point one, in motion.
So move.
Seven. Discussion.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Item three, approval of minutes, approval of minutes of me on July fourteenth. In motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Item four, personnel items for action, personnel consent agendas recommended to board at each piece approved, personnel items, in motion.
So move.
Second. Discussion.
I just have a couple comments, I guess, or questions. So the student tutors, we had a couple in the last meeting and we have more in this meeting. Are they all, where do they all go? Are they, there's like eleven altogether, they call it OES, or some at OEMS, some at AES?
So we do, we have some at, at Lake Elementary School, some at Owego Elementary School. We also have some student tutors who work with other students at the secondary level as well.
Okay, so they are tutoring, right?
Yep.
Individual children and stuff like that, doing throughout all the buildings?
Yeah, and the elementary schools typically, it's students that are interested in early education, so they're also trying to gain some experience of working in the classroom with students and along with other teachers as well.
I have another question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Nora. I do have another question. So, and again, new girl on the block type of thing. So, so these are paid fifteen dollars and something cents an hour, correct?
Yes.
And then I see in the same thing that we have a couple of support staff, custodian, custodial worker?
Mm-hmm.
And a teacher aide. Can you tell me why there's such a small difference?
They get, that's, that's the minimum wage, so they get paid minimum wage.
Okay, and then the teacher aide and the custodial worker get eighteen cents an hour or more? Can we, do we know what, like is there a reason why?
That's.
The contract.
Okay. I don't, is it?
That's a contract, yeah.
Because then we have a student intern, a college intern for buildings and trades getting nineteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's, that's for summer, so for summer enrichment, college interns, summer enrichment programs are entirely different from the rest. So students, they get paid thirty, or sorry, nineteen dollars an hour, I believe. Teachers get paid thirty-five an hour. I think that students jump to thirty-seven.
All right. Understood.
Yeah, they're, they're two separate.
Okay.
You got your, enrichment is really outside of the contracts.
Okay.
That's run through BOSI, so all those funds will go through an enrichment coser. So typically, ours is roughly, probably reimbursement around eighty percent, so whatever we typically spend in that enrichment coser, we'll receive eighty percent of that back in eight following year.
Okay, yeah.
But, yeah, so they're all really just that, that's minimum wage, it's.
I understand where my concern is.
No question.
Okay.
Yep.
I've got students who are making about the same wage as I've got full-time employees, and without those full-time employees, we could not do the job that we do, right? None of us could function, and we're paying them barely above minimum wage. Just something to consider.
Sure.
Well, for clarification, the contractual entry level for a teacher aide versus a maintenance person varies depending on the contract, that information's in the contract, correct?
Yes.
And, and then, of course, the percentage raises that happen on a three to five-year basis, depending on the length of the contract, will have an impact on their salaries, based on that holiday rate as well, so we recommend that. If you're bringing them.
I, I just think that it's, I'm not sure that it sounds, and again, it's in my opinion that we have these full-time people who are barely making minimum wage, starting, whether there's entry level or not, and we've got student workers who are making about the same.
It's been an ongoing complaint throughout the valley here, between this district and going over to the other side, Pinkerton, Johnson City, they all have similar concerns in policy. Are they good people?
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when it said teacher aide transportation, where does the teacher aide transportation be?
Bus aid.
Yeah.
The bus?
A bus aid.
The bus aid.
Oh, so not really a teacher, any practice.
It should just.
Yeah, I've got my one.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
It's the same way as teacher aides.
Okay, that's just the, okay, gotcha.
Anything else?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Okay. Finance items for action, five point one through five point seven, in motion.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
We also have a second transfer, I think there was a second transfer ended today. I emailed everybody.
So I'll make sure.
Can, just, what's student unit contract?
So that's a, that's a special education program at Pinkerton University. I believe it's K two, it's six one one.
Okay, all right, and college bound?
So college bound and career ready is a company that we've been working with, probably over the last three years now, behind the development of our career center, you know, our, our student workers as well, so she's, she's been consulting along the way as we continue to build the career center for our students.
And is this, like, are we looking to see, is this thing, this contract, like a continuous forever?
It goes year, it's year to year, yeah.
Okay, and we're figuring, like, in five years, you know, we know what we're doing, we don't need them anymore?
Yeah, she's also working with us on pathways and the new portrait of a graduate piece, so, yeah. She's been very supportive, very helpful to Tom Westcott and his team, and the work that they're doing.
Last one, I can, for this section. Appointment of contractor RFPs upon hold as scheduled construction materials testing as special inspection services?
Yep. So we have to, we have to appoint a company to do the testing, they might, any type of materials testing, they may test the concrete in terms of the hardness of, of the concrete, so there's a bunch of different things that have to be tested when you have construction projects going on, which you see with the fireproofing and the change order.
Yeah.
That's another, another piece that some foul had to be tested, that's why that ended up being, had, had to be redone.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a lot of little testing things that have to happen, so they would be the contract, that company that would do those for the projects.
And this is a separate, because we had construction going on for every year, right?
Yep.
So every year this is, every year we have to do this?
If we're in construction, typically, there's going to be some testing going on, yeah.
Okay, and so every year we have to have this project on?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
Okay, transportation request, local school recommended an board of education approved transportation request, six point one, and also six point two, CPSC recommendation that, the recommendation of CPSC, CSC, if they're working or if they're approved, in motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
White?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Teresa? Hi.
Okay, so, my report, I want to talk to you about this thing, kind of a topic of discussion, and brought to my attention, Linda wrote it up that she felt that this needed to be more discussed in public in terms of what's going on with the internal auditor. And so, just to get a little history, our internal auditor's been working with us for probably ten years or so. And if you recall, it was in a public session, there was a suggestion that there might be a conflict of interest between two of the entities that we hired for construction projects, that the two companies' management or lead or head of those companies were married and they had what could be conceived as a conflict of interest, given the fact of duties of those two responsibilities. So, we got a vote, it was in December or January, something like that, that we should have had us to do a little dive into that and make sure everything was okay. If anyone has a correction, we know. So we decided to look into that, and that process is still ongoing. Then we had a risk assessment audit, which is an annual audit. At that time, that was after, I believe, the previous audit was for the conflict of interest. So given the fact that we were looking into a conflict of interest, I had asked the internal auditor if that sounded like a conflict of interest to her. And she replied that she could use that as part of her risk assessment audit. So, I think we had discussions about that, that we didn't have a formal vote on that in terms of the audit committee, which is the entire board. I believe at one of our meetings, you know, I said I would take responsibility, if that's the case, then we moved forward without a formal vote of the entire board. So at one point, at some point tonight, we will have to have a vote on whether we're going to move forward, just to make sure it's in public and all the people on the board are in favor of keeping that internal audit. So subsequent to that, risk assessment audit, they came back with some findings that were needed to be addressed and fixed and corrected. That auditor had been terminated. So, if you don't know, and if I'm wrong, but the board is responsible for, we have three employees, we have superintendent, we have an internal auditor, we have the attorney, and I believe they're the protectors, the two responsible for. So, other than notes to us on the board, the internal auditor was terminated, which is very common in terms of, I think, procedure, not to be aware that none of our people that were responsible for it was terminated. So, and although you're fascinated, ask for RFPs, I am pretty sure that anyone that we had put out an RFP would terminate their services. So if we put out an RFP for an attorney, we didn't terminate the attorney and then put out an RFP. Certainly, if we put out an RFP, we would send an RFP to the attorney, and the people would serve us for extended period of time, so that was not done. So, I guess, in conversations with our attorney, then tried to kind of rectify this, because as of July first, I guess we unofficially didn't have an internal auditor, which is our responsibility as a board. So in an attempt to make sure that we were covered to have an internal auditor, we took some steps to find if everybody is kind of up to speed and confident with the services that have been provided for the last decade through this internal auditor. So, in public, I mean, if anyone else wanted to add anything to that, or if I misstep, miscommunicated, or misspoke, I think that's kind of a summary of my recollection of how things went down.
I had a question, Joe, and I think I mentioned this in my communication with the rest of the board, is that it wasn't so much the services being performed by TST, which is the BOSI service that we have our auditor from, yet it was the individual auditor itself who I personally had a problem with, only because, when I say personally, I don't mean personally, you know what I mean?
So, as we're auditing.
I had, I had a problem with the auditor, not with the findings, whatever the findings were, were the findings. What I had trouble with is that for the last ten years that I've been on this board, we have never had some of these findings that were evident, there was a breakdown in communication, and so from, from me looking from a thirty thousand foot level, I was like, well, why didn't she explain why she didn't see these issues in the past? Now, and, and that was never answered for me as a board member, and she's never been given a chance in front of me to explain why she didn't pick up on any of these particular issues over the last ten years that I've been on the board that she's reported out. She's picked up issues, obviously, that we've handled as a board, as a district, but these particular issues, it was really concerning to me. And so, I still have a question, and I would graciously ask again for that either TST or represent somebody to tell us why these things were evident and why they weren't seen before, because it's concerning to me that all of a sudden, these things popped. So, that's really, I have no problem with the services, it was the individual who demonstrated information that just like, well, why did you see this before? You've been the same auditor for our district for ten years. So that was my concern, and I think I shared that with the rest of the board.
Have you ever directed her to look into potential conflicts of interest? Or had the board of her suggesting that she looks into potential conflicts of interest?
No, sir.
Probably one reason, I would assume.
But, but again, we, we always, as a board, gave our internal auditor the direction on how to do a risk assessment, what we wanted clarified, focused on, at least from my experience for risk assessments that I, that's what I recall, that's what Mr. Civic recalled, which he shared with the rest of the board here recently. So, and again, my only stance today is it's not so much the services being provided by whoever, it's the auditor and why these things were not demonstrated in previous audits, risk assessments, I should say. I just, I just don't understand that. I mean, I'm a, I'm a person whose attention to detail, and it's like, why did, why did you not see this before?
So, then the assumption being is that the procedures and the protocols followed over all these years has been the same and there was no changes? Because that's where I can see a possible, why now all of a sudden it's popping up if something has changed, procedures have changed, and now there might be a miss somewhere that nobody's realizing?
I guess it just was, from my perspective, when the risk assessment was being utilized for in the district, for the board and for, for the district themselves, I don't, I just, like I said, the direction was never given to that auditor on what to do. No, that's not saying that someone on the board didn't give that person the direction, but we as a board did not. That, and like I said, I've missed a couple of meetings, but I have not missed something related to this, and I even listen to it when I'm not here, you know, live, I can, so I stay in touch with what's going on. So I, like I said, that, the bottom line is, I just want whoever's going to be doing this job, no matter where the service is coming from, is that they're taking direction from the board and what we want them to focus on. That's what, that's my concern.
Yeah. I would also state that if I went back two years, and, you know, my memory is as great as it used to be, however, I don't recall a meeting, if I couldn't be wrong, we could get back into the notes, about a, a meeting about the budget committee or the audit committee
The meetings were called, and individuals were all invited to attend, and those that showed showed, we didn't, we never had a full board. You know, we had people who could make the meeting at five o'clock in the afternoon or whenever the meeting was called, I, I would have to have Marcy go back to the records, but we were all invited as a board to come to the meetings when the audit committee met for the results, for whatever. That's what I had to call.
I think the, the report was in March, and I've suggested several times to have them come back and answer questions. So, let's hold with that.
Mine too.
In the meantime, I think we need to have the internal auditor.
Yes.
They weren't informed of the RFP?
I don't know, I'm not sure if they were. I don't, that comes from BOSI. CBO, who knows that?
But you would send them an RFP.
Normally, they, I think CBO would do that. I don't know if they did or didn't. We had two submittals, so, which is why I said if you want to extend it to a back gap, we certainly could do that.
So we've been happy with that for the past ten years, up until this past risk assessment, based on whatever.
Yes.
So, with the service, I would make a motion that we keep the service for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. We also ask them back and prepare questions in advance, so that they come. I would make a motion that we continue our services for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six later.
I'll second. Linda?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Teresa? Hi.
Joe? White?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Okay. Anything else on that topic? All right, that's all I got. Or can you record?
There is the first read of the two, the heat index and the cell phones, everywhere to look at. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, so, Dr. Montles had chaired a group of staff and students and parents. We received an initial policy from our legal firm, Cameron Daniels at St. Elber. I don't believe really much changed at all from that. There's some pieces in there to talk about what specific pouches that we're going to use in terms of storage for devices. We had to, in the policy, also had to determine how we're going to inform families, ways that they can contact their children at school, which is, go back to the, the days before cell phones, of, you know, calling the office or sending an email, things of that nature. They also go to Let's Talk, which we had as well, that people have access to. So, it's really pretty straightforward, as far as the policy reads and goes, I don't foresee unless the board over the next week or two has some suggestions or changes that they'd like to see. It's really what our, what we've got is what our attorney is, is telling us that we should have in policy.
I just have a question, where are the pouches located? Like, is it the teacher's responsibility, is it the?
No, the students have, they'll have their pouches, so.
They have the pouches.
Yep.
Downstairs.
When they come in, they have to be, they have to put them in the pouches, and then when they leave, there's a magnet that allows it to open, and then they can have it out upon, you know, leaving the, for the day.
So they personally carry the pouch back and forth?
They carry it with.
Okay, what happens if I forget to bring my pouch today?
Then you probably.
I have my phone.
You probably would have your phone in the office for the day, would be my guess.
Good, that, I could see that being the admission.
I've heard some stories of different shenanigans that have already been done in different districts for this.
Well, are the pouches locking?
Yeah.
And isn't the locking mechanism in the office? Like, to unlock it would be, you have to go to the office?
I can, I can tell you that, so, there are different types of unlocking stations that we have around the district. There are the ones that we actually will have locked throughout the day that are out in the hallways. We also have six portable unlock stations, there's going to be one in each main office, one in each guidance office, and one with each SRO every day that we can use if there's a situation where we need to unlock phones during the day. There's also going to be one in the welcome center, so the welcome center one will be open throughout the day, because we always have somebody in man at that desk, so if a student's leaving for an appointment or something along those lines, they can unlock their phone as they leave for the day or through that door. That's our one point of entry and exit during the day, that's going to be the one that's unlocked throughout the day, unless there's a situation where, say, guidance needs to have them open their phone, or, oh, we even have that also.
So it's a path around us of some kind?
Yes.
And so every child who walks through?
So, when they, they come in, they just click, oop, and they lock.
Okay.
And as they leave, they put it up to the, the device, and it unlocks their, and they push the button and unlocks their phone.
So they don't need the device to lock it? And we're trusting them to lock it during the day?
So we are going to have staff at the entrances that are going to be checking them as they come through.
Okay.
So does this have to be visible, and that?
The cell phone, the pouch. The idea is that the pouch is away, you know, that, that's our main goal, have their phones away. So ideally, that would be just go away in their backpack or whatever, from that. That would be the ideal situation, if I'm sure.
I recall the presentation that we did here recently, and that would be helpful if you could present that to, on this time.
Sorry.
If you could pass it on to her.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I'm more than happy, if you want to come over, I think I can show you.
Go ahead, thank you.
I've got samples, I've got, and we should be getting the lock stations up over the next couple of weeks, because that actually began last week, so we've been starting that process of getting everything in place for the school here. Our student workers are actually putting up the lock stations over the next, hopefully this week. It depends on the weather, if it's nice, they're going outside, but if it's, you know, too hot or, or if raining, they're going to be putting up those stations throughout.
There's some other districts locally that started this process a few months back, correct? I know Johnson City has theirs in place, and.
Bantamton, when you point, Tyoga has it.
Castile.
Vessel does, Vessel Middle School does. We actually, during our leadership conference, they did a presentation, when you point Bantamton, both did a presentation of using the other pouches last year. Mr. Schofield and I did sit through that, we had some good pointers from them. They actually did it a year before, the governor had said that this ban would be difficult to place.
And they probably shared some of their horror stories as well.
They did.
And what we can.
Things to, to get us ready for what we're hopefully not going to see, but is better prepared.
Absolutely.
But will we have some policies so it won't fall on the teachers to?
Yes.
You know what I mean, because they don't need police officers in these hallways.
Absolutely not. We're going to be working on that with the teachers with their, their process. We have letters going out this week, we're waiting until today, we, we might have waited this meeting, we're actually going to plan to send them out this week, laying out the, knowing what's happening, how they work. Also, our rules to be, three steps. If a student does an enforcement policy, Ms. Porsha and I worked very closely on this because we want to make sure both sides are doing the same throughout it. So, the enforcement, the first time the student doesn't have, isn't on policy, we take their phone, it goes into a, in a folder in the office for the day, we email home. The second time, same thing, student pick up their phone at the end of the day, we email and call home. However, the third offense, parent will be required to pick up their phone at the end of the day, for that third offense. So that's the same six through twelve, and we have the same policy for all the buildings. We have the same emails that are going to be going out, everything is the same to each building.
And of course, each time, does that be a conversation with the student about what expectations are with the cell phone, so that way everything is laid out clearly and there are no questions?
It'll be a big focus in our, our conduct meetings that are happening in the first week of school. So our target start date is the first Monday, average school starts on September eighth is our hard start date, because that gives us three days to work the staff and students to make sure that we are putting this in place, making sure it's done correctly, and not just for all the elderly and students.
How much added, added time do you anticipate in the mornings when they, because I assume that when everyone arrives at the same time, and they've got to get their packets done?
So, the districts we spoke to, the first few. So, the districts we spoke to, um, the first few weeks, it slows down a little bit. Um, but once they get into that routine, it, it goes very quickly. Also, in the morning, we go staggered buses, which will, you know, allow that flow to continue. Uh, watching, I did go to Tyoga and watched their dismissal. It takes them less than that to unlock their phone. Uh, we have nineteen unlock stations throughout this, the school, um, so it should be fairly fast and efficient. Uh, they're going to get various doors, uh, throughout the district, both OFA and over OES.
So and then if the student comes in late, they're, I'm assuming the person at the welcome center is there responsible to make sure that they're locking it?
So they walk in, they'll just hold up their underpouch, it's locked, and they just need to pick it up. Um, it's not so, we don't need to physically check everyone. You can actually tell that it's unlocked because there's a lime green inside. If you see any lime green, it's not locked. So if you don't, don't see any lime green, you know that the.
And this is strictly for middle and high, not the elementarys?
That is our purpose. That's the middle and high school. Um, the elementary school felt that with the amount of students that they have with cell phones that can currently maintain it through other policies within the school. Uh, this is something that we're open to having a conversation, um, if we need to stay out of the elementary school once we get this started. However, we did feel that it was important that we did six through twelve and not just nine through twelve, um, with the joint building.
I meant to ask that question back when you presented about the elementary. Okay.
After speaking with the, the principals, they thought that really there's only fifth graders really the, the grade that had them. Um, you know, I, I've got a son over in AES and he doesn't have a phone yet. He won't have one for a while. Uh, but they, they thought that fifth grade was the only one. They, they could maintain the, the rules and regulations simply with those, um, teachers. They have them all back, they see the students all day so that they can maintain that situation.
What's the, uh, life expectancy of these pouches?
So they said three to five years, uh, of hard use, um, but they do, we do have, um, fifteen percent extra, um, in the order. They added fifteen percent onto it. Um, and we'll be needing to be a cycle as we go through, um, to see how the wear and tear goes with those devices. But the most districts are saying it's three to five.
And they're not things that keeps them stuck like ripping off walls and kind of what else?
The, the locks, the lock stations?
Yes.
They're bolted into the walls, um, so that's why we went with the version we did, which are the lock ones. It's actually had lock on the outside. The other version, they unscrewed and we had to screw in the part, but we had a conversation as an administrative team. And students gonna walk by and just grab that and walk out with that. So we, we went with the lock station, which is actually bolted and physically into the wall, so it can't be taken.
It reminds me of the, the days when we used to have those magnetic things on the back of doors. That's why it reminds me of.
Uh, the pouches, I know that you presented, I wasn't here, but it was June second that you presented. I missed the meeting. But are they soft? Like, can they be cut? Can they just be, kind of, like?
Can you remind me of the air, eye glass?
Like a baggie?
No, they're strong.
Actually remind me of Golden Gate.
They're kind of like that plastic, um, cloth leather, canvas leather. In theory, yes, they could be cut. Um, that's why we have put policies in place if a student does tamper with the device. Um, there are policies in our student policy that, um, address that situation directly. Um, where a student would be, uh, the second time it happens, they would get a device again, the underpouch again. However, the third time, fourth, we could be charging parents for the destruction of that underpouch. Just kind of like a canvassy, plastic device. Other questions on?
Regarding the Golden Rule Scholarship Committee, we've been talking, we'll have a formal recommendation at the next board meeting. It'll basically be up to the scholarship from, I think, five hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars this past June. And, uh, we're thinking it fills up fifty dollars a year, and plus or minus fifty recipients. It's gonna be up to, we had a ten-year plan that we're probably gonna recommend, and it'll be up to eighteen hundred bucks in ten years. So, um, more about that next time.
Just quickly, the other first read is extreme heat condition days. Uh, so putting some procedures in place to track temperature when, when we know it's gonna be, you know, above eighty-five degrees. Uh, similar to what we do with, uh, in athletics, determining, you know, heat index outside on the turf and things of that nature, so. Um, again, pretty straightforward as far as temperatures go, uh, you know, you want to try and do proactive things, like turning off the lights if possible, pulling out the shades, uh, turning on fans, open doors, windows. Um, the majority of our classrooms right now are air-conditioned. We have some sections of the high school that aren't, but, um, a good amount of the district now is air-conditioned, so don't foresee us, um, having a huge issue. We also have some larger spaces in the high school currently that are air-conditioned, uh, that we could go to as needed and to kind of rotate through, um, if we get a, get a really hot day. Based on the last couple of weeks we've had, try to have a few, few hot days in there.
Is there a plan in place in order to upgrade this, the areas that are air-conditioned? Or we're talking of this, we're talking like this is a major overhaul thing to provide that?
Well, we have, we're, we're gonna be able to do some, just not sure though, we don't have to do all of that at the moment. So it may require another project to complete all of the, the air-condition. But we're, quite honestly, overall, we're in a pretty good, pretty good place based on, uh, all four buildings. So then the last policy is, again, this is just a straightforward, uh, policy from NISBA. It's our sample policy, uh, around the student, student board member. Uh, we've always had a, a, a student representative, which is under president of the student council. Uh, so I'm talking with Dr. Muckus and Mr. Schofield, uh, felt that they would like to continue with that for the time being. Um, we have had some challenges because a lot of times those students are extremely busy. They're in, you know, they're in band, chorus, and athletics and, and all these different things. So they have a tough time, um, you know, to make it to the meetings. But we have had that representation, uh, for several years now. So that's it, the policies for the time being. Alright, so nine by one superintendent has a couple of things I just want to touch on. Um, we have a last minute, or within the last week or so, kind of tech from Senator Schumer's office that he is gonna be in town and wants to come by the district to talk about the Bux grant for Brigham University, which you saw a presentation a few months back about our social workers, um, that we had, and we go to military school, well, that grant finally has been cut. So he wants feedback to hear from, um, from, from staff, and we've got Anne's gonna come, and we've got, um, Taylor Harris, who's our school psychologist at, at OES, who does a lot of work with them as well, some administrators. And then some, uh, other districts are gonna attend as well. Shiningo Forks will have some representation. Mayanwell, I think, wins are, uh, are the, the primary ones. And it's gonna be a quick, probably thirty, forty-five minute discussion on, you know, how this is gonna impact us with this grant going away. So, assuming the goal is obviously he can go back and advocate for, for some of those funds to be able to continue those programs. Just quickly, um, the French, as I know, we had some questions on middle school French. We, uh, when we initially had signups, we had five students that signed up. And we talked about different options of possibly a virtual, some type of share with another district. Or in the meantime, the school counselors had contacted families, and all five of those students have already, they're already transferring into Spanish. So they clearly didn't want to do a virtual, which is totally understandable. Trying to learn a language, a virtual is probably, uh, extremely difficult. So, that person that teaches French is dual-certified, so they'll be able to pick up some, some section help of, of Spanish as well.
So we have a long-term sub who's also doing Spanish, right? With this person picking up more Spanish, is the need for the long-term sub still there?
Uh, I would think so, yes. Yeah. Based on numbers.
So tell me what.
We're not having less kids taking language. It's the same about the kids. It's just they're not, they're not taking French. She would have only been teaching one section of French. Because the numbers are that low.
Is this kind of typical? Because I, every time, every, since I can remember, so I've got at least two different languages. Is this kind of the way things are going in other schools too, other districts?
I think you're, you're, you're seeing the challenges in general, just with, um, with being only get language teachers.
Yes, I know that.
And all districts have challenges there. Um, but I think in general too, you know, I had a joke about this, but when you pick up the phone and call somebody, usually they say, would you like it to hear in Spanish or English? Um, usually French is not mentioned, not the, not in the sense that it's not, um.
So next year, when the, when the offerings are out and children have to choose, is French still gonna at least be on the table?
That's a decision I think that's gonna have to be made between that and that of, if we wanna be able to keep that or if we wanna move in the direction of just offering Spanish at the moment. We're looking at another language.
Well, she's certified, duly certified in both languages. Um, yeah, and I get my other question is, yeah, can we offer things like sign language? Does it have to be?
Right. No, you're right. I think we could, you know, for something like that.
Just so they have some options versus, hey, Spanish is, and you gotta do it. And I, I hate the thought of limiting opportunities. Latin, I'd hope to see them do Latin because a lot of words, the basis out of that Latin, and.
Yeah, I think that's something over this year that we need to, to work through and figure out what the, what the next steps will be. Because we've had those numbers have declined over the years and we're, now we're really just, we're at a place where it's, it's hard to offer a class with, with five students.
So, seventh grade, they all take a language, right? Eighth grade, do they all take a language? And so then every eighth grader is sitting in a language for high school credit?
Yep. Yes. Yep. They can take the, the assessment at the end of eighth grade for a look. But we can look into the other options and have the middle school come present, um, you know, some different ideas and get some feedback from students and families. Uh, you know, French isn't offered in sign language. One, is sign language an option? And two, would it be something they'd be interested in? We can get that, get that feedback from them.
And, and does it require them to say, A language or language? And my question being is if it says that they have to have a year of language, can it be two, half year of one and half year of the other? Does it have to be a full year of one particular language and they have two?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Swider about that. I think your, your challenge is the assessment. Um, you probably see it's a significant decline in assessment results, uh, with them doing half of half. So that, that was his concern. But again, anything can be on the table to take a look at moving forward.
Because I'm assuming there's some children in the eighth grade who like, yeah, I don't, not really worried about the assessment. I'm gonna end up taking a language in the language grade anyway, type of, whereas I'm assuming we offered in the eighth grades for those who then at the twelfth grade want to take the more advanced language, takes the advanced language, correct?
Well, the, the key for them taking it and completing it in the eighth grade, it's gonna give them an opportunity to, to get catch credit for the, for the, um, more intensive courses.
Okay.
And Corey, trying to build the numbers of, has the district ever considered elementary foreign language like Spanish and or French?
We haven't.
For kids, elementary?
Not to that, no.
We had it in over a decade, a long time. Are there any changes with, uh, portion of graduate that might have had? I, and I should not have said that. There's a lot of questions here, but, um, for the graduate, moving through the changes in the graduation requirements may also be a bad word. Foreign language, whether it be requirement or expectation, so.
Yeah, so the, uh, if you haven't seen this, I can, I can forward you the most updated. But the, the buckets really for the portion of graduate are academically prepared, creative innovator, critical thinker, effective communicator, global citizen, and reflective and future-focused. So those are kind of the, the general themes of the portion of graduate.
I think the region's gone away eventually, um, is really tight with foreign language. It was the fact that, uh, everyone had to have one credit was one language for the region. Okay, it's not exactly like that, so, um, that is interesting. You should know that. That's a good question.
Yeah, and we, I don't think we have an answer to that yet, but we can, we can look into that as to how that, how language is gonna.
Have we offered foreign language for kids for enrichment in the summer camp?
Yes.
Yeah, we've had some different things, camps.
Chris and all regular two-week.
Right.
Emergency course.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to figure out how's set the spark.
Yeah.
They're both big foreign languages. I can't say the Latin's beautiful.
Uh, let's see, so, I just wanted to talk quickly. I'll let, I'll let Bob and Luke talk about the marketing for Pilot. Uh, but Marathon Health virtual component, so as I did a shared review, we saved, um, a pretty, pretty significant amount of money in the construction costs of the facility. Um, so conversations had, had been had, um, because I know that one of the pieces that we've been looking at all along was being able to offer that, uh, behavioral health component to our staff and, and their dependents. Uh, so it looks like we can do that for, uh, with the savings, obviously, creating pretty significant with construction. Our cost for the, for the entire year is less than what the minimum is, but it's about a hundred and fourteen thousand. Um, and we saved, uh, I think we saved two hundred and forty-one thousand in the construction costs, so. We have that opportunity to do that. I know Manuels met and, uh, is interested in, in moving forward with offering that virtual component right now so that families will have access to, uh, behavioral health support.
So can you just provide me a little history, the reason for doing this, right?
Yeah, so, um, you know, we've been looking at this for, for well over a year. Um, as you're, you probably are well aware, uh, health insurance costs continue to rise. They're just continuing to, uh, explode. So over, um, the previous contract, we moved to high deductible plans, which we're trying to build, uh, trying to build a culture of, of, uh, consumerism for staff and for families to start to take a close look at, you know, where they're going for their care. How much does it cost? Um, and that part of the high deductible that they get, the seventy-five, uh, seven thousand to thirty-five hundred, depending on if it's family or individual.
Yeah.
Uh, so what Marathon Health really does is, so they're gonna offer a shared clinic for the employees, for us and Manuels. So we still, both districts still have a large percentage of people that go to walk-ins, emergency rooms, things of that nature that cost a significant amount of money. So, um, there's really a preventative care approach to the whole piece of having access and we can sketch, we can control the hours that it's open so that our staff, both of our staff will have opportunity to, um, to be able to attend the clinic if they so choose. They're not required to do so, um, but there's, obviously there's incentive in, uh, some savings for themselves as well because it's gonna be, it'd be much cheaper to go to the clinic versus maybe, uh, a doctor's office someplace. Uh, so that's kind of the basis of it. Over time, it's another opportunity for us to try to save money around, around health insurance and think differently about, um, how we offer health insurance and, and to help people, uh, become more educated in how to use it and for their benefit and also, you know, for their preventative care.
So how do we, we as a district save money?
Yes. So we're projected to save money. We're in a three-year contract. We're s, we're projected to save, oh, I have to go back. I want to say it's close to, close to a million dollars over, um, over those three years.
Based on what? What, what is it that is giving us the savings?
What's gonna give us the savings?
Yeah.
Well, it's the, the less frequent visits to the high-cost emergency rooms, doctor's offices, uh, things of that nature that are, that are pretty pricey.
So then that is over and above what, you, you take out the cost and what it's costing us in order for the billing and the personnel and all this stuff? It's that, that's the additional savings above that? Or is that just?
That would be additional state, that would be additional state. So that's already factored in, the cost of, uh, the staff there, the cost of the lease. All of that's factored in. We would, we're still projected to save close to a million dollars over, in, over three years. So just looking at other ways to, to tackle health insurance and the rising costs and.
I get it, I get it.
You know, so. You know, so it's but we'll be the first two districts in New York State to do this, um so we'll.
It assumes that there's a twenty-six to twenty-seven percent participation rate.
I'm sorry.
So if we can get twenty-seven percent of our folks to participate, that's where those numbers are.
Right.
So and I'm assuming it's going to be then hours that are frontly for us in terms of, hey, it's not closing at five o'clock when, right, we're we're open till nine and we're Saturdays and possibly Sundays type of thing.
Yeah, so the yeah, districts, we get to control what those hours would be.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a chance some of the costs, we're still, we're still kind of working through that, some of the costs could potentially run through, most is closer. So that expense, we would be able to get aid on that as well, so we're still working through uh some of those details. Yeah, so the greater percentage of people above the twenty-six or twenty-seven percent, the greater savings you're gonna have, you know, over that uh three-year term.
It's not sort of the employees is is the cost. So from the high deductible plan, the visit's gonna be thirty bucks, okay? You might walk out of there with a prescription, a generic prescription, I think there's a hundred eighty to two hundred generic prescriptions. Again, total of thirty bucks, walk in and out, you go on for a strep uh strep test. Walk in, you get the prescription, come out, thirty bucks. So it's gonna be a great incentive and the location of the building is right in the middle of all of the subscribers who bought this trip, they're in it now.
Did we did a presentation to five of these guys?
Yep, at the end of uh this past year.
And is this, the availability is to actives versus retirees?
Yes, it's it's currently for actives, yes. They changed on the road, I don't know.
Well, my my part of my my question is what happens to those who are not at sixty-five? Still on the health insurance, right, but they're not sixty-five yet. They're not actives, but they're still under the the actives health insurance. Are they, like, what happens to them?
So I don't think.
I think they're included.
Sixty.
Up to sixty-five.
Up to sixty, I'm I'm I think you were talking about.
That's good, I haven't heard of it yet. I haven't heard anything about this.
Okay, yeah. Up to sixty-five, so then beyond that, it would be uh if you give me a.
Yeah.
Uh let's see. I'll turn it over to Dr. Farrell and Luke McAdoo. Who has their public relations.
The other thing to think about, there's a gap between what the employee pays out of your HSA or HRA.
Yeah.
And then up to about a hundred thousand dollars where stop loss comes into play. So when you claim over that, you get reimbursed. So that gap is a massive amount of money that we pay in claims outrank to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And the only way to lower that threshold is to lower the threshold the employee pays inside their document side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
So you look, that's that's the way it works. It works by hitting that in between. For the term of savings, so the twenty-six percent comes into play. If you get twenty-six percent to participate, it will eat away so that employees aren't hitting into that side of that threshold, because those are outright claims that we're paying in cash. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
So that's how the savings come about. All right, so this is this year's favorite topic. The not central to the high quality gas, Stagecoach, that's who owns it now. Stagecoach Pilot. So this um is not really a, this is not a formal presentation, if you will. Don't take this as this is what we're gonna do, okay? That's not what this is. This is the opening of a discussion. It's meant to uh get us to at least start to have an engagement about how we might go about this. Um Luke and I and Cory talked about a framework to work from, but this doesn't have to be what it's gonna be. This is just the beginning of that conversation. Um I think what we wanna get to is a place where we build messaging consensus. That's a a real important part of whatever we decide to do in terms of public relations. And I think that we also wanna get to a place of process consensus, right? The two, and think of the two both tonight, all right? We'll talk a lot about process tonight. Um I don't know that we'll get our message down tonight to be completely concrete, all right? So don't take that pressure tonight as though you have to come out of here and know what to say. That's not what it is, okay? It is more along the lines of this is kind of an idea of a process that we can follow in terms of public relations, all right? So just to set the stage. Um this document is what we're working from, so full transparency, you're seeing what we see, it's just, this is what we're we're editing right now as we go inside of the Google Doc, you're looking at it. Um and you can see that there's the goal there, I'm not gonna read it out, you you can take time to read that at at some point, but the bottom line is, is that we have the Stagecoach Pilot ending and coming back onto the tax rolls. We've been through this now quite a bit um with this problem that is going to present itself in the next budget. And the only way for that to be back on the rules is for it to go back on the levy. And for it to go back on the levy, we have to increase the levy by that same amount. And that's going to present a very large tax increase on the levy, all right? The key here is to make sure that the understanding of what the levy is, and that is not what somebody's personal tax bill is. They're very different, all right? The board's only real control over the ta- over taxes is to tax, is to set that the levy is gonna be. And then once that goes to the assessment office, it's then divvied out to the towns and then people pay their recording tax that way, all right? So that's what this is. Um as we talked about this, we think, we've talked about simple, as simple as we can make it for people, right? Um if we start getting into, well, your house might be this and you live in this town, it might be this. I would strongly avoid that conversation because we're not gonna know. We're just not gonna know until this time next year, once the vote goes through, all right? So if someone's in the town of Nichols Ash here, you're gonna say, well, that gets shaken out in the assessment office. It's outside of us. All we can control is the levy. Um so as far as a strategy, um we created what are called phases, all right? It doesn't have to be this way, this is just kind of what you're thinking. Um and this would start pretty much immediately according to this plan, right? We're gonna, as soon as we can start the process of communicating about this and the board feels that we're ready to move on and and put out the message, that's when this starts, right? And that would really be phase one. And here's what I would, here's what I would say. In my experience, no matter what it is, and I, we have been through the Great Recession, massive layoffs, the pandemic, the flood, I've been through all those things. And here's what I can tell you I've learned from them. If you don't get your internal messaging down first, you will struggle on the outside. All right, and typically what happens is, well, the administration has the message. Bad, bad approach. The board has the message, bad, bad approach. It's gonna have to be a together thing. So what we're proposing is that we spend a good amount of time in the beginning working solely on the internal parts. Teachers, employees, administrators, or work our way through the organization first so that everybody understands it. Because that's our biggest messengers, in my opinion, right? They're the ones that are gonna get asked at the game, at the birthday party, at the Thanksgiving table. All right, and they have to know what to say. That's the approach we we propose, we take from the very beginning. Once we feel we're comfortable enough to where we think we've gotten across to everybody, we've met with everybody, and we feel that everyone's got a good, a decent spot, then we start to go out and push publicly from there. Or give you a parallel, you know, I'm, that's that's the idea, that's the concept here, all right? So phase one is really about nailing down the beginning parts here, which is getting everybody in the inside to understand the bottom. All right, and how we might message out about it. Once we get past that phase, we move into the second phase, and this is the initial outreach. And this is really ongoing all the way right up to the budget vote, where we start to explain to the public in as simple form as we can. We have started a little flyer, it's a one-page flyer, and it's got a little graphic on it, and it just basically says, this number's moving to this place. And this is why. That's it. No more. Don't complicate it any more than that. And keeping that message as simple as possible. That'll be the second phase. And then as we work our way down into phase three, we'll uh then get closer. I see this time is really, this is we get past the new year, we're starting budget season. Now it's that we're we're actually doing town halls, we're sitting with community, we're we're talking with them individually. People are asking questions and we're having a conversation. This is where you get to the rotaries, the lion's, the wannas, all the places. Literally to youth football, your youth cheer, all of it, youth stuff, all of it. You gotta go to everybody and help them understand what's going on. And you set up those arrangements for that. We'll be doing, you know, you know, a lot of the website stuff, videos, we'll put that out, we'll do all of those public relation tools that we can. But I, in in my personal opinion about this, face-to-face conversation is gonna work way better than anything else, so that people can just ask, help me understand this thing, okay? Um and then pre-vote's really the week before the vote, it's just the reminder, that's just the generation of people coming to vote. Here's what I'll tell you, if anybody's ever been through this, the no votes are always gonna be there, always. It's the key. Technically, under the law, I cannot persuade anybody to vote any particular way. Nor can the superintendent, so but the bottom line is, we need to have, we need, we need, yes, votes. And we're gonna have to decide how they come and show up to vote. That's gonna be the deal. That's that weekend reminder and push people to vote. And then the final phase is really, the votes come through, now we communicate how, you know, the outcome and make a decision from there based on that vote outcome. And that's, it's got detail in here, I'm not gonna go through all that, you can take time to read that, but this is just an opportunity to to get a frame of doubt, so um I'll open it up, questions, thoughts, concerns, anything.
Bob, I just have one question. So we struck fishing this out to the public and there are questions um that I'm not, I don't know enough, I'm not comfortable answering. Is there a go-to person that I say, here, here's the person, how they contact, there's an email, telephone number, something? If there's gonna be a direct communication some way, somehow with a person, this question that we.
No, I'm just kidding. It's it's gonna be me.
Yeah.
Uh I I'm very much more of a phone person, I've said that many times, right? Just have people call me. Uh it's really okay. I, that happens, every tax season, I'm on the phone with a taxpayer. At this time of year, because this is when payments come through. After a year, I'll have a conversation with someone over their tax bill. So it's very common, so.
Luke will also set up um opportunity for people to message in and that we could call back, whatever they prefer as a means of communication. So we can follow emails or follow, let's talk, a lot of those specific topic for that, you know, when it comes up.
So is that going to be when we message out whichever, whatever way, some way, here's contact information, here's old communication question?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll take a lot of those, yes, questions and make F A Qs, that way we can continue to push it out. Kind of be the same type of question comes up, or maybe an out-of-left-field question, but that now we get that on the website, but that's whatever we need going forward, you know, help help people.
Both Luke and I talked and we really think we 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 wanna avoid any sort of fear monitoring. Not, I I I don't think it's a good approach at all, right? If you don't do this, this is what happens. I I don't, I don't like that approach at all, right? That's debatable. So I'm putting it out there, right, so just think about with the messaging of that, because it can start to turn, right? And that happens a lot in school votes. If you don't do it, this is what happens, right? Um we wanna try to stay very straightforward and simple. This is what it is, and this is what it means, and that's it.
Good question. Is there any, like, let's say a brand-new company came in and didn't do a pilot and wanted to come out of our tax rolls. Is there any essential difference between the net result? If they threw the same net worth coming out to our tax rolls as opposed to a pilot?
Uh, don't know.
You know what I mean, like, so did.
I I think I follow your question in that what happens to a regular bit, you know, a a small business shows up, you know, and now they're on the tax rolls, right?
Well, even even a business that's the size of this.
That size?
Yeah, comes in, sets up shop, takes over a factory, whatever, and wants to start a business but doesn't wanna do the pilot, they got cash on hand.
Oh, they can do that, yeah.
But what is the, does that?
I think the difference is, the difference is the pilot, no, that would, yeah, that's gonna blow up the.
It was right at the levy.
It goes right in the levy.
That's an assessed value of the property, and the property is then paid, you know, based on the true tax rate, like everybody else.
It seems palatable to, more palatable to me. It's just as I, as I think through that, you know, so a company comes in and wants to set up shop or, you know, for X millions of dollars, they're gonna come out of the tax rolls, right? It's gonna impact the levy, but they don't wanna do a pilot. They just wanna come out. It's gonna have the same impact.
It actually does. So you remember the, in the tax cap formula, the second line is the brick and mortar percentage that affects the cap? That's exactly what that would affect. And it would, and it typically increases it, and then it opens the opportunity for the board to have a higher tax rate.
Like they do all these that went in, we'll see.
Right, we're gonna see that, Taco Bell, we saw the apartments up across on four thirty-four, they went up. Um those are things outside of our control, they happen, and then that's where that number shows up inside of the tax.
That's kind of what I'm saying. So no one's complaining about all these coming in, I don't think. You know, no one's complained about new business coming in, but coming out the tax rolls sounds a little funky.
Well, my understanding, what, Bob, isn't it true that I, that's what IBA did in order to advertise? Businesses to come to Uwe Go, if you do, and here's what we'll do for you.
Yeah.
And I mean, statewide?
Statewide, the difference, the difference with the pilot, it incentivizes so they're gonna pay less as they get their, you know, their their footing and their company in whatever area that they're at, and then it scales its way up versus they come in and just go around the rolls, they're they're paying what their assessed value is.
It's a payment in lieu of taxes. That's literally, we negotiated three million dollars, that's what you pay. That's not even related to the assessment. It probably is, I don't know the calculation, but they negotiate.
This is the way they tried to draw businesses into the Uwe Go app, like, years ago.
That's correct.
Absolutely, but but what I'm saying, I don't think, I think fewer people would be against, just the notion of businesses coming to Uwe Go.
Of, I would think, absolutely.
So if it was seen as, you know, instead of them being away on the pilot for so long, this is the business coming to Uwe Go. Yes, it'd be impacting the business coming to Uwe Go.
It's see where you're going.
Because some, if if we just, I'm just putting it out there because it's, it seems more palatable to me that if this is.
Knock that out, or I see where you're going with this.
So this business has been on a pilot for a while, they've been paying um the payments in lieu of taxes. So imagine another company coming in for the same value and not wanting to do a pilot for some reason. They're just gonna go on the levies, the same thing, and we want businesses to come to Uwe Go. That's a much easier sell to get, in my opinion, and I don't know how to do it. But it's a guess. Essentially, a business coming to Uwe Go, it's just been a number of years where they have been making taxes.
Well, they pay that.
Well, they pay the, yeah, you pay.
They pay that, they just pay the negotiator rate, but while everybody else. They pay it, they just pay the negotiator rate, while everybody else pays based on your assessed value, and that's, well, so. I I I get what you're saying, I'm not sure exactly.
I think the challenge is, has a reverse effect on the nineteen, the nineteen, they're gonna say, well, wait a minute, if this new business has come in, but why are we, why are we seeing nineteen by two percent?
That's exactly right.
What are we, what are we paying for that they're not?
That's the number, right? What else?
So I think the initial, the the graphic that Luke and and Bob have been working on, will be, when this gets set, will be a mailing to every taxpayer. It's a very simple, basic informational piece where they can reach out, ask questions, there'll be a link, it looks like, that's gonna go to our our website. Which will, which will talk all about this, this scenario.
We're gonna share that with you guys, we're gonna look at that, we're gonna go back and forth about it. I I do think that's the way to go about this, you'll see it well in advance before we put that out, and if that works. What other thoughts or concerns, anything else?
How soon is that first mailing gonna be?
Uh, not, not really soon, the first part, I I guess that's the question. For direction's sake, are you in agreement, at least for the internal side work, because in a month, everyone's coming back to school. And that basically means that my September is gonna be that. I'm gonna run around building to building and just explain it. And I'm not gonna do it at faculty meetings, that's not how, no. That's not where you do it, probably going grade level to grade level, that's how it's gonna go, grade level to grade level, department to a department. I've done this before on other issues and other things, that's gonna be the approach. Do you agree with that first, before we do anything? Yes, no, you think there should be a different way?
Then, in terms of, okay, so now you're gonna, which I, which I agree with, yep, department by department, like, small by small, I get that.
They can ask questions, clarify.
Right, um, here's what I feel, as soon as you start talking.
I get it.
Right, then all of a sudden, it's gonna go out, now all of a sudden, we're gonna have a whole bunch of people like, oh my gosh, what is this?
Well, it's, it's out there, because there's, The Morning Times has the story, and The Penny Saver shared the same story on the eighteenth, so. Story about the IDA, and and when the decision was made, is out there. So, questions are, are coming, we've updated the website, with that information that's already out there, we'll continue to do that, and then, we got, like, this kind of. Balance, convert, internal conversations, and then start that.
So there's a parallel way, I mean, we could do it, but it's, I just don't wanna be out, I mean, that's the question, you're making a legitimate point, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
That was my question, is it gonna be ready to go with tax bills that I nailed it in the month?
That would be so.
To every taxpayer, would make the most sense, but it's.
Hang on, you wanna say month?
Because once this starts, it, as you know.
Oh, I get it.
It's gonna balloon fast, and I mean, you're gonna be inundated beyond.
I do think, you know, potentially, you could do a district-wide faculty meeting.
Yeah.
At the same time.
Yeah.
Where they're hearing one, the very first time that they hear it, they're hearing it from you guys.
Yeah.
The very first message, and then after that.
So.
Yeah, I would start it on opening day.
I was gonna say, for sure.
The only caution I have on that one is, I hate starting the year off of. Something they perceive as a negative, like, you know what I mean, and it's been through that, so I, I agree with it, I just.
No, I don't necessarily think it has to be opening day, because obviously, put the gap. But, you can figure out a time to have both elementaries potentially, and then later, and then, just so that they're hearing the same thing initially from the two-minute meeting. And then, and then break off into small.
We could do that.
A second week in September.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Well, that's for messaging too, is we're, we're seeking their help, communication.
Well, that's the biggest thing, it's, it's gonna come down to, you know, what are they talking about this, and they're gonna have a great time then.
We were already talking about it. This conversation has already started.
We've talked about, you know, more personalized-type letters, so maybe, you know, maybe it's not full details, but maybe it's just a letter saying, this is what's happening. We could probably include a letter in this tax bill, might not have specifics as to where everything's at at this point, but maybe it's a heads-up letter as to how, maybe we'll come.
Keep looking, and look in your your med box or future poster.
Yes.
That could work. Okay.
Just an opportunity to get that to all those people.
I'm sure we could come up with something.
That's, that's when.
That's, they go out to Friday before Labor Day. The board is going to approve and sign the word tonight, and it's going to the county, and they can start printing it every time. We strategically don't mail them out till Thursday or Friday prior to Labor Day, because they aren't due till the second, but people have them on the thirtieth of August, they'll be in the box on the thirty-first.
Let's talk about that, I I.
Even if it's just an intro.
Love it, but.
Yeah, I know, just an intro letter, like, this is, and as you've written in The Penny Saver, or as you've heard on, you know, Morning Times, the IDA did this. This school is supposed to do that, and here's where your taxpayer is coming.
How many voters do we have in the district, employees or students?
Oh, in the district? Well, um, yeah, we.
We look, we did that.
We do, yeah.
No, they aren't all.
We are, and the percentage of vote is, the percentage of no vote is very.
Well, the overall percentage is pretty low, too, yeah.
I mean, if you're gonna, gonna do it, you're gonna wanna get votes internally, obviously, I mean.
Well, that's, that's really important, yeah.
And and don't forget the students, you know, Luke who can vote.
A right, the right pick last.
There's, you know, there can be, it's fun, you know.
Look at those other classes. They'd break conversations.
Well, I think, you know, there's, there's some students who are motivated politically, regardless of what side it is, but, you know. I've noticed they start taking these things more seriously than I ever did, and I was aware it might be worth.
Little different generation, no question.
I like, Len knew I was very politically active when I was in high school.
Uh, anything else? I think I got probably some common messaging, this whole, combined with individual apartments and teams. And you're okay with that approach to start, a little bit of a delay getting it out in terms of the formal stuff, is that, yes? We're on the same page with that? Okay, so, let's, let's go with that, and then, we will come back to you next time with a flyer, so you can look at that, I think that's a good next step for you to.
So why don't we have the agenda, let's just put it, or have it on the agenda, just.
I would just keep it right through.
Throughout the year, so we can update, you know, every meeting, talk about what's, what's next, what currently went out.
Will you, will you give us the agenda prior to meetings, so we can really look at, look at and think that?
Yes. Yes, we do that.
So we agreed we are gonna send something out with the bill, tax bill?
Sure, we're not that lucky.
No, you know, Len, that's four of you.
Did you get the agenda this time?
It's seventy-eight.
Get the agenda this time?
It's twenty-eight?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. I just get close enough to opening day, so.
Anything, anything else?
No, I think good.
Alright, if you're done.
Right, so. We have Mrs. Castrolan, who is gonna introduce some of our faculty, who went to ISTI conference in June. And all reports are, they did incredible jobs with presentations that took place. Of the learning that that came from that conference, and I think feeling pretty good about where we have some certain things, based on the state of others across the country, so.
So, we had the awesome opportunity to go to ISTI, it means International Society for Technology and Education. It is a major uh constructional technology conference in the United States, but also you have the international part, so it's. You get worldwide opportunity to see things that, from different countries and different vendors from across the world. So, it brings together educators, administrators, tech leaders, ed tech companies, and they just share. And it's a huge event to share, to learn, to network, to just see what's out there, new, up and coming, also maybe even things that we haven't learned in the district. Um, and so, we were able to see keynote speakers, be able to go to different places, get hands-on work. Um, and then there were interactive sessions, but also this huge expo hall, which had been, you know, vendors in there, ready to share. And let you dive right into whatever it is that they are, you know, trying to show off for everybody. It was huge, and I I'm sure they'll, it was a huge one, it was in San Antonio, we were at the convention center, near that convention center, and two other hotels. They used rooms in the hotels, like the conference rooms and other hotels, so it was huge. I know Ade did the walking over to the other places, I stayed in the one location, but it was, I mean, it was just like spread out all over the place. Um, but one of the the key pieces that we had was Erin, she's a math teacher at the high school, she was able, she put in to present. And so, part of this tonight is her sharing her presentation. But the people who went, so, and people are here, Sarah Thompson.
Hi.
Erin Green, so Sarah teaches ELA Social Studies and Middle School, Erin Green, math at the high school, John Ward, Social Studies High School. Jane Gibson, our esteemed teacher AES, and Debbie Martin. The only person not here today is just Emily Seedy, she couldn't be here, but she also went along on this trip. So seven of us, we did a great team, and we had time just dividing and conquering, and being able to see all the things that we could watch and see. Um, so I'd like to pass it over to Erin, because we went to ISTI the year before, and everyone got really energized to say, you know, we do some really cool stuff here. And we're doing a lot of great learning. Maybe I could submit a proposal to be able to present at this major, major conference. And so Erin was, but I'll let you speak today, I wanna say your name.
Yeah, so mine was all about using learner profiles, which is really how, what it sounds like, knowing who your students are, their preferences, their strengths, their interests, what motivates them. And that's what teachers do anyways, where we learn who our students are, we use that to do our instruction, to create the opportunities that we do in this district for our students. Um, but I wanted to kind of take you on how the technology and what we have available, to kind of streamline that process. So, we want to go to more. Oh, yes, so I start every year with a survey, this is a paper version, but I moved on to like a digital version, and you'll see why. Kind of just what do I want to know about my students as the year goes on, what would really be helpful to know about them as they start the school year? So I take all this information, whatever I feel like would be useful, including their interests and anything that can kind of drive instruction. But what my presentation really was on, if you go to the next one, was using all that info, and I use a Google Form, because then it goes right into a spreadsheet. You can throw that into an AI, Magic School works great for that in the chat box, and I'll analyze all the students' surveys. So instead of going through, you know, when you teach high school, and you have a hundred students, and going through all of them, trying to, you know, go streamline the process. So I can upload this whole Google Sheet, and then I can get a breakdown of per class or personal students. So on the next one, maybe one more. Um, so then, this, this was just an example of my first period, right, twelve students, and it kind of breaks down what their survey responses were. Um, and you can do it for individual students too. But I take this, this is my starting point for the school year, and then, with AI, Magic School is the one I use the most, because that's what we use, and it's really good for education. I can use these surveys or these profiles that we created, and then I can create opportunities in my instruction that hit their learning preferences and their styles. Um, so if you go a couple more, I'm just kind of giving you the highlights of this. Uh, right, so then this one, I'm using the student learner profiles from my first period, right, that we just used in the AI. Can I have some options for activities on solving equations in one variable? It's a different learning profile for different students in my classroom. Um, and it'll come down with a bunch of different activities, if they're good for hands-on, more visual, more auditory. And you can bring down what students maybe would prefer, or would benefit most from those. And, you know, one, two more, sorry. So then, this would be the output, right, so I take those surveys, I upload the information, I analyze it, using, all using AI, like, streamlining what we would do anyways as teachers through as a school year in the beginning. And now, what I wanna teach a lesson, and I wanna make sure I have opportunities for the different learners, now I have a bunch of opportunities, or ideas, to then go into my lesson planning. So it's just a tool to streamline what we already do, and create more opportunities.
And can you share a little bit about this poster session, if that was one?
Yes, so, yeah, my poster was, it was a ninety-minute session, so people could come, they could hear me talk about what I just talked to you about, ask a lot of questions. I talked to a lot of, it wasn't, there was a range of teachers, administration, I talked to some tech company owners, educational researchers, there was instructional coaches, it was, people of all different domains of education. And it was really cool to kind of see how this could relate, like, yes, I'm talking about how I use this for teaching math, but really, how it could be, how this could be a tool to do a lot of our projects.
Um, and so, one of the things that we wanted to also kind of spend time is, share a little bit of our experiences, and if you have any questions for us. Or if you have anything, for your announcements or presentation, if you have any questions about her presentation. It's pretty cool.
I was able to watch her, you know, present to some people, you know, secret stuff, representing well.
It was a fun time, I definitely did not think I was gonna get accepted when I put in the app, or when I put in the proposal for this, but it was definitely a journey for me.
And one of the principals gave me some, was, was one of the principals, like, you know, trying to figure out how.
Yes, there was a manager, and they were really trying to, they were trying to bridge, like, the gap between up there, employees being really hesitant about AI. Um, and this felt like it was a good entryway, where it's not like, this is not doing our job, this is just a tool to help us what we already do. And he found that that would be very good to bring back to his teachers.
So you said you use Magic School most?
Yes.
And any others, or any other?
Um, I use ChatGPT, hold on, but I try to stick with Magic Schools because we have it, and it's compliant for ed laws. I mean, there's so many out there, and that's the other thing, I saw some of those people, there's a lot of different tools, AI tools, that can do the same process.
Yeah, thinking back off of that, we actually learned about Padlet is a subscription we already have, but now there's Padlet TA. I've been really liking it this summer, working at Camp Waga, because I'm not a special ed teacher, but it helps me come up with special ed activities. Um, but it does a very similar function, and plus it has some other little functions, like, one of my favorite ones, just for fun, is coloring sheets, you can literally think of anything. So it's like Magic School, but it's got some different nuances that help plan, just whatever your preferences.
Question, these have all been presented like through professional development for teachers?
Oh, no, this was just her presenting to this national conference, we haven't brought it back yet.
This stuff happened, it's happening, but she did it to work.
I did do a PD, a three-session PD over Canvas for teachers using AI as an entryway.
Yes, I reckon we're up to a handful of folks that have been kind of piloting this similar work. Obviously, the feedback piece and mechanism of getting that much more quicker than students versus the traditional way. It might be a couple of days before they get some feedback based on assessment, you know, whether it's a quiz, or, you know, a hands-on activity, whatever it might be. The speed of the feedback, I think, is what's been quite interesting to watch, and the evolution of that happening in different domains and classrooms across our high school and middle schools. So, yeah, I think they're probably gonna do a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, we could start down here, but one of the things I just wanted to share with you guys and things, I'm trying to think of something, anyway. Anyway, I'll share my one, um, so when we were walking around the expo, I think it was Usana, was it you, or Usana?
It was me.
It was you, okay. Uh, we went over to, the drone soccer was huge, yeah, so we had two locations, and so. locations. And so I was, you know, we were kind of like wandering around. So I decided to go up to the US Drone booth. And they were like, oh, you interested in drone soccer? And I said, wow.
Happy to have you.
It's like our team went to the finals. They're like, who are you? They kind of like shudder. They're like, who are you? And they just were all three of them like, oh my goodness, those kids were awesome. They are amazing. And they had, it was really kind of cool to be in that moment, this huge conference. And then that host people knew about kids. And they were just beaming about them. So I wanted to share that with you guys. That was one of my highlights. It was really cool.
I mean, they did. They knew that they couldn't pronounce Appalachian.
Yep.
And the kids mocked them for that, but they really spoke highly of our, our students that went and how respectful and polite they were. And just what a great job that they did.
And their interviewing skills. They were finding out how every team had to get interviewed by this one particular person. So I was like, wow, that's some stuff. Want to share that? That was a big highlight? That's pretty cool.
I mean, for me, not only coming back with ideas and things to put in our classrooms, I came back with a bunch of ideas. Dr. Carroll, he's looking at the money signs going by as I talk to him. But really, it was powerful for me to have conversations with administrators across the country and the world to see how they're implementing AI, how they're implementing these technologies in the classrooms and the struggles they're seeing and the struggles we're seeing. So that dialogue, for me, was the most powerful thing. It's really collaborating with people that are kind of in the same situations, but slightly different demographics, which gives us more tools and skills to bring back to help our students that year.
I think I read ChatGPT is going to introduce a study, ChatGPT study, to either get it out or pilot it or get it out there probably in the fall. So it's not going to just give kids the answers. It's going to help them.
And that's one of the things with Magic School is it's purely, you know, the kids answer this question, it won't. But some of it, like if you put it into ChatGPT, it would, right? So it's kind of, you know, trying to introduce that and given the.
Some of the work we did at OFA and OANAS this past spring was working on those study bots and using those personalized learning for those students, which they're already doing in those grade levels and eighth grades, seventh grade, putting that student learning profile together and implementing it in the study bots that our students can use throughout, not only their time here, but as they move on, whether it's to college or career or whatever it is for their future.
And one of the things, highlight for me, we went to a session on, it was, they call it Portrait of Graduate, but it was really a portfolio, curating a student portfolio over time and how they chose to do that. And they were using an app called Book Creator, which was something they already have, and were introduced at the elementary level. So that kind of piqued my, okay, so we could be using a tool we already have, students are able to use it, and then they start to curate their, their learning, their experiences over time. If that's something that's a part of the pathway for graduation is being able to have that portfolio assessment.
And they showed a great example of elementary, kind of curating their learning through various, and then showed how it advanced, you know, things through, through their senior year. And because we already have it.
Yeah, so we were.
Very easily adapt to this.
Can you talk a little bit about the difference prior to these tools coming out, your experience teaching, and then, and then now? What is that, what is it like for you as a teacher versus what it was three years ago before you had these tools?
Yeah. I think it's just a lot quicker to start to learn about your students more and more deeper, really, because you have, you have all this information at first. And I would kind of do this before, and then I would just have a hundred surveys in front of me, right? And then the school year goes on, as you learn more students, and then, you know, as, as nature goes on with teaching. But I think this just hurries learning about, like, starting to learn about their interests and being able to, from the start, include those in the instruction versus bringing it a little bit later on in the year, and you probably wouldn't get that information naturally.
Across the curriculum, are you, are you working on helping the kids develop how to write a prompt, working with AI?
So that was one of my goals going in. And John and I actually had the opportunity to go to a session, which they talked about the efficacy, like, is it morally correct to allow students to use AI? And how AI is kind of scary. I mean, they were very transparent with, you know, you can put your face out on the internet, AI is down, and they can do anything with it. So actually, one thing I was able to get was this card game. I will pass it around. It is called the AI Effect. And so what it is, I was really inspired. So I'm going to bring it to my classroom, use it on my kids. But it's essentially, they have to go through different AI situations and they have to decide, is it helping the human connection or hurting the human connection? And is it something that is like that we should be doing? So I think having that as a baseline and making a gamified version of it will help them learn to write those prompts where they won't feel like they're learning just normally, especially as an English teacher. We already teach them to write so much, especially through social studies. So now, how can we do that? Time in social studies, time, what's happening, the current events, how can we bring it all together?
A lot of social studies already is ethics.
Yes.
And that was one of the big takeaways I've had going into this was, how can I make myself more of an expert? So that way I'm sharing my knowledge with kids on how to use things like this safer. Especially because when we were at that session, she used a social media post as an example of someone just sitting in their living room. You take that post and you can take it into an AI, do a little brush stroke on the image and say, put drug paraphernalia and alcohol in the picture. And it is seamless. You would not be able to tell otherwise. And I could see some of that leaking into the accessibility that a kid has, especially with their ties to social media today and using it in not the best manner, obviously. And if we have a better grasp on that as educators and we're getting ahead of it, especially on the social studies side of things, I think we can help them navigate the troubles.
You're helping them develop critical thinking skills by helping them learn how to write the correct prompt, what it is that they're doing their research on.
Right.
Utilize for hard issues.
Because really, writing, writing AI prompts aren't that different from writing a, a good Google search. And that's something we also, like this year, was, it was kind of eye-opening how many eighth graders didn't know how to search on Google. So we really, it's a whole, it's not just the AI prompt, it's AI overall. How can this be, how can you use this as a, like a, like a tool only? And how can it hurt you if you don't? Whether it's in academics or in.
And that was also a topic at OFA after the English region, which we take in January. I went to a eleven-grade English teacher who tackled the ethics of AI and worked on contracting in AI with the students. It was actually interesting, the feedback that students were actually against the use of AI. They saw it as cheating. So having those conversations with the students, that they have these feelings that AI is a method of cheating also. So not only is there, you know, we're going to tackle that side with the adults, you know, the teachers and parents and all that, with how to use AI, but also our students have that idea of using AI is not supporting them. So different angle to it, something that we normally wouldn't think of with a kid who's had a cell phone in their hand since, you know, they're in third grade, but they actually see that technology as holding them back also.
Was there any discussion about, what to call it, an interesting juxtaposition of any cell phones in bags and like, and the promotion of AI? And how do you reconcile that in the classroom?
So the cell phone, I mean, the cell phone came from the governor. We have no choice on that one. So that, you know, they're really, you're not going to get to that side, but we do have individual one-to-one devices. We need to have students to have access to Magic School. It is used throughout our district with multiple different teachers. I know at home, they only use, almost every teacher uses it in some, some way. So really, those conversations that we're having with staff is going to be a really big focus on how can AI support you with your, your teaching? I would have loved to have AI when I was a first-year teacher and spending four hours after school every day writing lesson plans in my, my room, you know, even brought in there and have it give ideas. It really is a tool to support the learning of our students and to support the staff to meet our students' needs.
And with that cell phone question, I think that all of the speakers I saw did a very good job of showing us how to use technology that aren't cell phones. I don't think cell phones were mentioned once as a device to use in the classroom.
So I think that this cell phone question would have been a much bigger one ten years ago. Schools were not one-to-one across the board.
One of the biggest challenges is not to assume that the information that you're getting from AI is correct.
That's true. That critical thinking is, it's such a huge component that we know. But now it's just even more important.
And doing like research topics, for example, that we've done in class before, a lot of the kids, when they do a Google search, and now Google has Gemini pop up as the first thing that you see on your screen, and it just gives you a very brief, broad explanation of the question you're asking. We harp and, and on them all the time. You don't just look at that, pull from your own brain. You have to click on other things rather than just the first thing you see, because a lot of times it isn't the exact right thing that we're looking for as educators. It's, we need a little bit more nuance in the answers that they're looking for.
And of course, like, we also have, like, I do something, it's called the craft test, very funny in eighth grade, but it's the credibility of sources, right? So whether it's AI or a journal or a news article, you still have a step-by-step way to look at something and think, is this truly credible or is there an agenda being pushed? Is this getting information from places that maybe aren't legitimate? So I think it's not necessarily something new for us. It's just a new media that we have to now teach them how to break and think and look at.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to come across as an idiot with cell phones, but I hate to say that, you know, I'm one of the older people, I guess, now, and I'm like the old guy. So to remember when cell phones came out, it was a very similar push to get them into classrooms and kind of, and, you know, it's come full circle. And I understand cell phones are different, but there was a time when cell phones were pushed as the next greatest thing. So I just, I just want to give a little bit of a pushback or a kind of an experience of when cell phones came out, they were promoted, they were, there were questions about it. And I think what Mike just brought up, one that was pretty important, there's a, you can kind of get out of it, which you did with cell phones. So I just, I'd be aware of this.
Yes. And of course, like, in my classroom personally, we're not ready to use AI as like a true tool yet for the students, because we're still figuring out our end. I mean, obviously, of course, we're not using the right prompts. But I think our fear is, is that they will always have access to AI outside of school, inside of school. So if we can front, like, we can get in there and make sure that we teach them how to use it properly, hopefully it doesn't spiral out of control the way that cell phones did, because I don't think that any of us thought cell phones would become what they, I mean, when I was in middle school, it split up into a keyboard. I tell the kids all the time, I think your life would be much different if you didn't have twenty-four-seven access to the.
And you know, a keyboard.
Right.
If you had just the ABC.
I did also.
Totally different.
Has the citing for reference related to that changed? Like, we, when we do our bibliographies and has the format changed specifically now that they have access to these other tools?
So MLA and APA are, they have rolled out a way to cite AI, you know, results. But you have to, right now, it's like something includes your prompt with that in the bibliography. So it's, there are steps on Owl Purdue that shows you how to cite AI.
And would you have measures, I would, I would think by at this point, kind of measures in place for our kids so that they're not plagiarizing or?
Right.
There, there are actually things going through the Supreme Court right now, not just on the education side of things, but on the artistic side of things, because image generation is such a huge thing right now. And in reality, all of those images that are created are pulled from all the different published images that Google has within the internet. So the question that's in Supreme Court is that generated image that is using someone else's copyrighted work kind of taking control of something that someone has already done, which is something that we'll have to navigate much higher up than here. But it's like in that same realm of what is going to be plagiarism from here on, you know?
Thank you.
So I am older than Google, so I was the old lady in this group.
No, I was the old lady.
So I was also the only elementary teacher. So I definitely had some takeaways. One huge takeaway for me as, as the only elementary school person was our meetings after, where we got to sit down, maybe it was at dinner around pool, we got back from a conference. And we were all just able to talk about what we saw and how we could use it or similar ways that we're doing it. So it was like a vertical branch, you know? Like, it was really kind of great to, to listen to the other content and things that are in the classrooms. Me personally, my takeaway was, we started our elementary STEAM program ten years ago. There was no such thing as elementary STEAM ten years ago at all. So there's no, there was no curriculum. There still is really no curriculum. There's no national standards, you know, there's standards that you can pull in, but there's nothing to tell you if you're doing it right. So going there, still don't know, like, are we, are we doing the right thing? Are we at the right cafe? And walking around, going to the sessions, like, okay, this is enough, you know, just maybe different. And, you know, getting some takeaways where we could do a little bit better, a little bit different. Going to the expo hall. So we started this ten years ago with a three-hundred-dollar Walmart shopping cart. So we no longer have, we have so, so many resources for the kids. So I know Heather was my partner for part of this. We would walk around like, okay, you have that. And I would say, hey, Jen, what about that? She's like, yeah.
You know, it was just so nice and validating for her, for her.
It was, it was very validating that we, as a district, are so far ahead, I think, of, I mean, not just locally, but, but nationally. Like, we are really doing a great job giving our students the opportunities and access to things that, that they need. So me personally, that was, that was very validating. However, if ChatGPT or AI was here ten years ago, it would have been a lot easier to create this program, like, not thousands of hours.
Those conversations were really important because now that generated excitement for them to collaborate across the district and to, to work together. That maybe wouldn't have otherwise happened. And also it energized people to want to be able to share their experiences this year with some of the things I learned and be able to put out proposals and be able to, I know all, everyone was really excited to do that, to have more people sharing what we do here. Dusty, it was amazing. And we thank you.
Yes, thank you. It was.
Very good. Excitement, I have obvious.
It was, I mean, it was just a great group. Those conversations that we were able to have. And really, the reality is, we would have never been in the same circles. You know what I mean? Aside from something like this, of being able to sit together and just plan. Like, they would talk about, oh, I had them. They're really like this, this, and this, you know? Like, we were able to just kind of work together. It was, it was exciting to, to both.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Nice job.
Did I just say that?
I was kidding.
I, I think that just, that's just in there. It's a, it's a big part of the, so there's nobody.
Step one, registration meeting calendar. Step two, approval of change order, motion.
To fill, there's just an F Y out.
Oh, it's.
Yes, we're really good.
Does, I, I guess, does this have the graduation date? So it out?
I think it's also on the screen weekend.
And what's the, I'm trying to know what, some of the numbers are in red. So like, if you look at September, you got twenty, twenty-nine, thirty in red.
At the very bottom.
Yeah, at the end, at the bottom of the CHL, it tells you color code.
Yeah, the red letters should be black.
I don't see, I don't see a code for that.
They're, they should be black. I won't change.
Oh, okay.
They were just like little paint turtles.
And the other question I had was some of our, our school functions, concerts, music concerts and events that we coordinated with the music schedule, because that sometimes has been.
They should pass, but, oh, sorry. Said that a lot.
I'm not, I'm just asking, because I know in the past, we've had board members that have had students performing, so.
Yeah, we can.
They tried to base this on our schedule. Mrs. Corolla was just really asking to set our schedule.
Okay.
So she can plan things, so.
Do you set graduation form?
We did put it out in the beginning.
Someone was going to talk to the story.
Yeah. I think, I think Phil, Phil's going to set up, going to set up a meeting with them, have that conversation.
It's always the third weekend, right?
Well.
They're not going to change.
They're not changing it. But isn't that Juneteenth too? Isn't that, is it for Juneteenth? And the question, can you even have a graduation on? Isn't that, and the question, can you even have a regulation on? That would be a Friday.
Sure, any question?
I don't care, I just don't know what you're allowed to.
We probably, uh, whether it's.
Melon hat was.
Right, whether it's proper. I think all, what we'll do is we'll have Phil come after he's had a meeting with, with them, a discussion and and then try to get this bottom out of the way early. Then we can communicate how what, what the true plan is going to be.
And is our only app, just, I guess, uh, so is he going in there shooting for what? What's his?
Uh, I'm not really sure. I think he'd like to try to figure out a way to still keep it, um, keep it somewhere in that week. So I don't know, maybe, maybe the Thursday, the 18th, because Friday's 12th, I'm not sure.
What about Sunday, on Sunday, uh, the 22nd, I mean?
Possibility.
Some schools have graduation on Sunday. But those are the two other considerations.
Yeah. I think, and I think probably Phil, they can share some feedback from kids too, as far as, you know, they could start working a week earlier, they, you know, a lot of them have orientations for, for college visits and things like that. So all things, I think, all things to consider.
The, I mean, I understand that the strawberry festival guy, uh, the mayor had issued, um, but, I mean, I didn't hear any complaints from them.
Did not, is it beautiful?
I mean, I think we, I, I think the, the reality of it is, is you bring 2,000 people into town that might not have come into town necessarily. Probably a higher likelihood that they're going to stop by something after, whether it's go out to a restaurant, or an event, or whatever it might be.
Didn't he say that there was a lower number turnout? Didn't he say that at the meeting?
I don't know.
He had said something like he, he beseeched us to not do it. Get on that.
Or to do not, or request not to.
It was a nightmare.
I guess, I, I'd love to know what the nightmare was.
I thought that that was more related to the traffic, but then, on the other side, I didn't hear the traffic.
No, I mean, you're done. It was 57 minutes. You're done, you're out of here, and you can go right down.
Yeah, now we're walking out and a lot of people talking, now we can go to fireworks.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah. The conversations we have with seniors, they liked it a week earlier, and they liked it that when we had it. So it was very positive for the students that it spoke. So we'll, we'll get with Phil, we'll try to get you a, some options to look at sort of later.
Tep two, approval of change order, motion?
Someone.
Second, second, any discussion?
Can I just ask what created or, yeah, what came about to?
The fire roofing. So, uh, when they were taking down the ceilings, some of the, the fire proofing started to, you know, the, the original fire roofing from when the middle school was built, started to fall. So that prompted them to have to do some testing and also because some of it had fallen, they had to put up the, the next rated, um, fire protection. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's right. The, the, the fireproofing, and it goes, what's called pull test? And a couple of rooms failed the pull test. So you have to take it all out, put brand new fireproofing.
In all the rooms?
Not all of them.
Just the ones that?
Just the ones that failed, failed the pull test. Because what you have is you got people on the roof and people in the sink at the same time working. And that's what happened. You don't want fireproofing falling on the, on the ceiling. It's gotta be secured, so unfortunately, it's going to cost money.
So both of these are related to the fireproofing?
No, the one is. The larger one is the fireproofing. The second one is for door access controllers in the pool area. And so we already have the hardware, but, um, because this project was bid, and there's a electrical contractor. The electrical contractor then does the door access hardware. So we have to pay that to be installed and hooked into our system, our door access system. It's above and beyond the contract, the original bid. So that prompts the change order.
And we didn't do no this originally, like?
What this?
That we didn't know that it was supposed to be on? And I forgive my ignorance, but.
You go, this happens in projects, you go through drawings, you go through everything, and then you get in there, and then you come across this stuff. You don't know the fire.
Oh, then, yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of the door access, for the project. We hired somebody, said, here, but here's what we want to do. All right, we get so far, and then somebody says, yeah, that's not really covered, and it's going to cause.
It's only based on what's in the specs, what's actually in the drawings, and they were not in the drawings.
So, I guess the next question, if you were to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 it's not attacking you, it's just an understanding, so. You know, if they weren't in the drawings, that would mean that someone didn't put it in the drawings. Or, or they weren't requested and they were required by the state. You know, those.
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that's, door access controls have been, are, are two different projects. So most of door access controls were done through the Smart Bonds project, which was 2020, or something like that. Uh, that was the, the state's funding that, and these doors did not get done in that part of the project. Because we were eventually going to do pool. So when we went to, they were not in the specs. So we gotta do them. It's not really an option, so.
So no respect.
No, but.
And, and we, I, yes, if I understand, can I get that one? Just like the future, like, how do we make sure that we, we avoid these oversights?
You can do as best you can. When you're having programming, you go through a, a fairly decent process, which begins with programming, saying everything needs to be done, then you go through drawings, and you go through all the stages. And even through all of that, you're still going to run into different things that pop up in the project.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's errors and omissions that are part of the project that you might unexpectedly find something like this. It's already, it happens.
And then most of the time, you can fill in the, the inside word called allowances. So every time you bid a project, the contractor bids, and a lot has what's created, uh, uh, an allotted allowance inside of there. If this exceeds the allowance amount, then that means it has to be a change order. The biggest problem here is, is that because this is a bided project, you can't really control this aspect. You, you, it's a little different when you have the co-op arrangement that we had before. You could have controlled that a little bit better, so. It's the way these things work out when it comes to bidding.
Outside of this one, is there a listing of anything else that may be out? And I said, in the example, you said that these were part of 2020, that were the project that happened that, oh, we didn't do those, the pool's coming up, what else is hanging out there that we can?
You always run into, you always run into issues like, uh, valve replacements, heat exchangers, things that, because mechanically, across the school district, there are lots, lots of machine, just mechanical devices, HVAC. And you can make as best a solid attempt between your architect and engineering firm to make sure you get everything covered. You try to get your maintenance department and them to work together to make sure that it's all in there. So as you're going through the process, you're trying to make sure it's in. And then even with that, there'll be some dial inside of hiring there.
Yeah, no, I guess, I, I get that portion. I had something of, it sounded like this was a no omission. You said, we're not doing it consciously, because no pools coming later with them. I guess that, that's why I said, a, a list of things like, again, it's.
If I remember right, that's how that went, was those doors specifically. You don't want, you don't want to do the doors when you're going to change the doors out.
Do it again.
You gotta do it all over again, you're paying twice.
Is there anything else like, that, that you would keep a running tally of? Okay, we didn't do this, we know this other project's coming. Might be something that is a feat about, I guess. Most things, yeah, most things come from when something gets opened up. And they get into it, and then realize something's bad, it has to be replaced, but they didn't necessarily know that until they opened it up. Kind of like a Pandora's box, I guess.
Well, that I understand, like, the fireproofing, that I understand. I'm, the door release is, I'm like, how is it missed? You know, is, is it something that's, was so unobvious? Like, oh, not, you know, you have five people or 10 people, eight of the 10 will pick it up? Like, that's, that's my question. Door releases, in my understanding, is, what, have you been living out? Is that what?
We're talking about the badge readers.
The badge readers?
Yes. Hardware.
$56,000 for badge readers?
The labor, yes, and all the work with it. Welcome to what's called low bid.
And somehow, when this was started or planned, somebody didn't think, come, we're going to have to use badge readers to get in there? And, and again, I'm, I'm the big kid, so I'm just, how does something like this get missed? When it's, we've been using badge readers for how long to get in there?
I think you're, you know, you're, uh.
And it's easy, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm behind A while, I'm not at the beginning, I'm at the end, and I'm okay while this happens. My concern is not that we have many more of these, it's been oversight, oversight. Because whoever then is supposed to be making sure that we don't have these type of oversights, we maybe get somebody else, or something else has to be done to make sure that it's not happening.
I think, I think John's point, by my understanding, is that, does this trigger something else that was omitted because we would do it later?
I'm just saying.
Is there potential for that? There's, there's.
I'm saying, it's like, just a thought process, right?
Yes.
Oh, we're doing the, the flooring in the, the high school, right? And so we did not put a new logo in the center, or something like that, because we knew the floor was going to be changed. So we knew that was going to, it was on the docket. And in, when I say it wasn't, in this case, it was more time to buy it, I'm just saying. But just as far as there anything else that we had projected, last year, two years ago, we said, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to change that now, because we know where to change it in the future, and just write it down, make sure that we had that list of, that's all it seems like. Is there anything, is there anything else that you should be thinking of now, like?
I can't, I couldn't say that right now.
Right.
Without looking in, in detail with that.
Well, I think the other case too is prioritizing, so it gets missed. But prioritizing from a safety standpoint, do you want it in, and to get it done? Uh, for a safety mechanism, or we know that there's going to need to be more pool work done down the road? Or it goes in, you know?
The important part here is that if, even if it was in, it would still be $56,000. It would have been bid that way. It's just a change to what the contract is.
Yeah, the business itself was known up front.
It doesn't, but you still have to pay it. And the, the, whether you get it in the bid or outside the bid as a change, that, that happens in every project. There's, unless you're not doing bid projects, you're doing cooperative projects, and you know upfront, and everything's in, it's a very different process. This is a process in that it would have been in there anyways, it would have been $56,000.
But there's a reason why it's, there's an allowance, and there's a minimum, 40 allowance.
Correct.
There's a reason why something like this triggers a change order. It's because it was missed. I think that's the issue, was that we hope that not many more things are missed, and that, and change orders are within the allowance. Because I think things are red flags for a reason, that if something is over the allowance, it has to come to the board, and we're responsible for what's getting spent, and we need to be aware of that. That's, that's how I interpret it. And in respect of it, if it had to be spent, there's a difference between approved money being spent and then bringing back change orders that are additional money being spent.
Well, it's still approved authorized amount of money to the project. That's, that's not changing. You can't go over that amount. That's authorized by the voters.
Right.
That doesn't change.
Yeah, so it's within the allowance, it's just a, it's just a larger.
It's just larger, it's really what's authorized by the voters, it's just larger than what's the allowance of that contractor, which are usually very low numbers, an electrician, it's not going to be that. That's why it's prompting a change order.
How many phases? I see this as phase two, how many phases?
We have phase three A, phase three B, and phase four.
There's two projects colliding together.
Correct.
So last summer, the gym was going to be done, but we decided to, decided to move that to this summer. So projects are kind of colliding together.
So one project is the gym, the other project is the?
You've got the music suite going on, you've got the pool going on, a large amount of roofing going in, um, mechanical systems, HVAC, uh, units. A lot of things, about 40, probably about $40 million worth of work. Is it, was the weight room move and things like that part of, not known? That's all, all in-house stuff that, that we're doing, our guys are doing, it's student workers are doing. So that does, that will, that doesn't have anything to do with capital.
Someone asked me about the playground in Athol Lake, is that being done? Because that was approved by the budget.
As phase three B. So it's being drawn as we speak.
Okay, but when will it be done?
That would be, uh, at this point, being drawn, submittal approval. You're looking at January next summer at the earliest.
Yeah, I think it's something to keep in mind with low bid versus cooperative bid, is the amount of attention to the project itself. And when you get into a low bid situation, and your gym needs to get done, but there's a certain price allotment for the gym with the, with the general contractor and the flooring person. Well, determining how many people show up to work on that job has a lot to do with what, uh, how much money they're, they're potentially going to make on the, on the job itself. So I would tell you right now that the gym is limping along slowly. And difference in cooperative, you know you're going to have a, a crew of people in there that's going to be in and out. So we've got some of that challenge going on as well.
Will get down people to school?
Don't know. Anything, any updates on the cooperative bidding issue that goes? Nothing yet, nothing yet. I do know that they're doing, the cooperative bidding is happening, um, outside of Groome County. Other counties around us are doing it, so.
Is there a plan in place for all the phys ed classes, for gym? Sounds like it's not going to be done. Limping along slowly, between two not being done.
Probably, yes, they're, they'll have to be, yeah.
It's the, it's not the middle school, it's just the high school gym, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have the same problem, can we all again?
We probably will in the beginning, yeah.
The difference now is it's already started.
Yeah, it's already on its way. Hopefully, it's getting started real fast.
I hope so. That is the hope.
Any other discussion?
Who did it?
Yes.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Teresa.
Hi.
Okay, public comment, you have two people for two minutes. Uh, first is Ann Harris.
Okay, either one of them wants to comment.
Why say that, yes?
That's a really great job you're doing here, it's great being here.
Rana?
No comments.
No comments? That's all we're concerned.
Just compliments, that's all.
Let them follow up. Next meeting, August 25th. Uh, we covered the internal laundry there. And, uh, what's that?
Higher, we higher communication number.
Any emotion for executive session?
Someone? Someone?